All right, everyone. Looks like we are ready to go. And I would like to open the agenda for the Georgetown Planning Board November 8th, 2017 meeting in Memorial Town Hall, 3rd floor conference room. It's about three, four minutes past seven. We have minutes, several vouchers. We have correspondence from adjacent towns and item 7, 8, 9 for correspondence on the agenda. We're going to move to the end of the meeting. And we're going to go to first the A&R Plan for National Ave. And then we have one public hearing, Bailey Lane. And the Affordable Housing Trust presentation will come after that. And then we'll have the member of public concerns and deal with those correspondence that we just talked about. So with that, let's begin with the minutes for October 25th, 2017.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Do you all hear any motions, please?
I move to accept the October 25th, 2017 minutes with corrections.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded to approve the draft minutes for 25th October 17th as written or as amended. Any discussion?
Only discussion, please. Go ahead.
There was just one point. Everything looked great. There was only one point here. At the end of the meeting, and it got a little bit busy, right before we were talking about the OSRD bylaw revisions, I believe I made a motion to authorize two LTA hours for the MyMap corrections.
That's correct.
And if I get a few seconds over there. And I believe I passed your news. So MyMap, two hours of LTA time.
Have we called that?
But it was busy. The mics probably.
Yep.
Papers. When we do this drives, must drive Andrea crazy.
So that correction is noted. John, you got that?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Just a small type of graphical error. Line number 14, motion to approve the minutes for the October 25th, 2017 meeting. That's the meeting that we were in. We're going to just run the minutes for the prior meeting.
That would be what?
Day 12th, plus or minus. I'm not sure.
12 plus minus. That's good for me.
Yeah, whatever the prior meeting was.
Whatever that meeting date was, 13 or something.
The 11th, actually.
11th, okay. All right.
I did think these were excellent.
Excellent. Compliments to Adrian.
Well, I want to thank you for including a link to where these can be found or the videos can be found. But I think you really got the right level of detail. And it's been a struggle over the years.
Did you have any?
How's it? Kelly?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, seeing no more corrections. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, so that takes care of minutes. Moving on to vouchers, we have one, two, three, four, five. Five vouchers. Who wants to take a crack?
We'll start it off if you'd like, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to approve the payment for the BSC Group for Professional Engineering Services rendered pertaining to Georgetown Plaza Improvement Project. Said payment in the amount of $6,100 reflected in the attached voucher.
Second.
Motion has been made and has been seconded to approve payment to the BSC Group in the amount of $6,100 as reflected in the attached voucher. Any discussion?
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Key. Number two.
Come on, somebody else. You're brilliant.
People must be sick of my voice. Even I am.
Looking for the one to read.
He's got the.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Planning Board approves payment to H.L. Graham of $1,385 for engineering review services rendered pertaining to Bailey Lane OSRD and said payment shall be expended from Planning Board Review Account 8000-258107.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded to approve payment to H.L. Graham in the amount of $1,385 for engineering review services pertaining to Bailey Lane OSRD. Any discussion?
I, yes, Larry does great work and he does, he's a great advocate for the town. These bills are just not okay for me. The level of detail is, it could be literally anything. And I think we've asked him time and time again to please give us a little bit more detail. And I'm just not, I'm not quite sure what more we need to do to.
I was going to say, John, do you have any suggestions? Have we pushed him clearly or maybe our communication has broken down a little bit with him on this?
Not that it's broken down. It's probably because he's brief in his reporting to the board. But it isn't a matter that he isn't doing the hours.
No, that, and it has nothing to do with that. And I hope he doesn't think that questioning the hours.
Can I give an analogy?
Could we?
It's like a mechanic. You bring your car to the mechanic. I can't believe it. That much? But, you know, engineers don't come cheap.
Yeah.
Not suggesting they should.
And that's.
Not questioning that, but so if the nice people from Bailey Lane would ever come to us and say, where's this money gone? I couldn't tell them.
Yep. Not to, if the applicant has a problem with it, I'm sure they would advocate that to us and not be bashful about it. They haven't said anything to me.
I'm not concerned now. Good thing. The category where he's writing down.
We already voted that.
The topic of his review, you want more than that? I mean.
So I know how I have to bill. I know I have to say, on June 22nd, I spent three hours working on the following project. I did these tasks. Not a period of three weeks. Over a period of three weeks, I did this task.
Well, he's writing here like plans and documents review report number four. Then the next one he wrote drainage review for 10 hours.
From 9:18 to 10:06.
I'm reading the total 1,385.
Correct.
Okay.
Look at senior project review engineer drainage review from 9:18 to 10:06.
Right.
10 hours, which I'm sure he did. I have no doubt in my mind that he did.
Would you know what you were looking at even if it was written here?
Yeah.
He would.
If he said on 9:18, I did this. On 10:20, I did that.
Are you looking for the days, Matt, broken down?
I'm looking for some more level of detail. BSC does it on a consistent basis.
I disagree. This is a contract. What we got from BSC, it's the agreement. There's no detail about what they actually did. It just said, we're going to bill you $6,100 on page two. And we have now a list in the back of it of stuff and what their rates are. And that's pretty much it. So I mean, you know, and it's three times what Larry's billing.
What BSC Group does with their invoicing, when you have a contract amount and the contract in the industry is based on a percentage of completion.
Yep.
Nine times out of 10 in the industry, you literally get a bill that just says X percent complete in a bill. And so that's what BSC is doing with.
Well, when they're hourly bills, when we're billing them hourly though, when they're billing us hourly, the level of detail is pretty thorough.
Well, that comes from, what's his name?
Dave Varga.
Dave Varga. Yeah. He's very detailed in his.
But that's almost a different story because he's describing what he's observing.
Yeah.
And that's a lot different from someone that's unfolding the plans, referring to plans, referring to subdivision rates.
Providing an analytical report.
So is there a way that we can not forget this, maybe move it to the end of the meeting or?
No, I guess I appear to be the only one that's concerned about it, which is fine. So I'll.
And you're entitled to be concerned, but I don't know if it's going to satisfy you because, to begin with, Larry Graham right off, he's used to small towns and communities. BSC, Dave Vargo, they're used to Boston municipality cities. They are. They're used to a large staff. They've got a well-organized company of.
I just feel like when I'm spending somebody else's money, I need to make sure that we're being good stewards of that money.
What I can't share with you, Matt, is that when I look at his bill and I, for example, category, what he does is he says, who is the staff level working on it? And he breaks that down in terms of whether it's managing engineer or senior project review engineer or administrative clerical. So he tells you who's doing the work in their office. He outlines the, he gives you the hours and then he gives you, it's a very brief description, but for myself, when I see plans and document reviews, comma, report number four, I know, I remember, you know, I know report number four and that was the culmination of his plan and document review.
Yep.
So it tells me the work. So, and it said, and I look at four hours and I go, yep. So from my experience in this, what I can say.
I would agree with you. That one makes perfect sense. That one I can hang my hat on.
Yep.
The next one, he billed 10 hours over a period of two weeks, which again, I'm sure he did.
So.
You know, but having him say, I went to site visit, I didn't make a site visit, I did this, I did that. It's how things are done in my profession. I don't know how they've done in yours, but.
So, in my profession, when I see drainage review, 10 hours, you know, it may be, there's another couple of words that would help elaborate that a little bit more. But it's not, it's not bad.
Mr. Chairman, forgive me, and I don't know, I don't want to either, but just final thoughts on this. I was under the impression that at least with the inspection engineer billing with BSC, not with Larry, but that the applicants were sent the bills, a copy of the bills, two weeks prior to our getting the payment request for them. And if there was any kind of an issue that they raised, you're absolutely right, then we'd ask for a greater level of detail. I was under the impression that was how we were doing things. I don't know if that's actually translated now into the peer review, but I thought that was the methodology we were using for the inspectional services review.
Inspection services, yes.
Right, yeah.
And that one we just approved tonight is probably a good example where that was held up for quite a while until it was properly documented.
Sure.
And then a couple of weeks ago, I brought in the applicant and went over the bill with them and they agreed to everything at that point and made the payment. So that particular project's free and clear of, you know, inspections.
Could we, as we move forward, Matt, you know, if you pick up on another bill that gets submitted and there's an item, you know, just let's talk about it if you've got a question about it when it shows up. And for now, I think, you know, we have talked about this and I think we're okay with these.
Would it be appropriate to vote on the 1,385 now?
Yeah, I think so. If there's no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, unanimous. Moving on to the third.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment to H.L. Graham of $910 for engineering review services prepared pertaining to the 198 East Main Street OSRD and said payment shall be expended from planning peer review account number eight, triple zero, 258137.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded to approve payment to H.L. Graham Associates in the amount of $910 for engineering review services rendered pertaining to 198 East Main Street OSRD. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four, Staples.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment from the Planning Board Account 5770, 542000 for the above cited Staples Office Supply Invoice in the amount of $40 and 11 cents.
Second. Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve payment for Planning Account 5570 backslash 542000 for the above cited Staples Office Supplies Invoice in the amount of $40 and 11 cents. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And we have one more.
I don't know what's, this is Staples.
No, this is, so.
Oh, that's opposing me.
It's back here.
So one more, need a motion for the postage meter.
Motion to approve payment for US postage meter in the amount of $100 from Postage Account 57, 5570, 542000.
Second.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve payment for the US postage meter in the amount of $100 for this payment to be expended from Planning Office Postage Account. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's finish these signatures.
We're burning the trees.
Well-oiled machines.
Back up.
I'm glad to see you still hold mine.
Getting chilly out. My chair gets cold in the morning.
I'm glad to see you holding on. Is that all we have?
Four.
Four, I thought we had five.
There were four invoices. There was a double. One was a double.
One of the vouchers had two.
Was it two sets of signatures for the double voucher?
No, negative.
Okay, so it was four groups of signatures. All right. Thank you, everyone. All right, so let's see, where are we? Now we're going to move on. Correspondence, we have nine listed on the agenda. The first six are from, the first five are from out of town. The sixth one is from resident Steve Sadler. He's also one of our selectmen, but he wrote it as a resident. And I'll just bring that to your attention. And item 7, 8, and 9, changed open meeting law Georgetown Plaza 6474 and 198 East Main Street. We will move those to the end of the meeting. So right now, we're going to go to the A&R Plan and looking for a motion just to open.
Make a motion to open the A&R Plan for review. Now, what is it? Thank you. For, in the name of Mr. William Rizzo, Lot 8A, 8B, and 8C on National Avenue.
I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to open up the meeting for the review of the A&R Plan, Lot 8A, 8B, and 8C at L. National Ave. John, you want to give us a?
Yeah, there is no one in the audience representing this application tonight. Is that correct? Okay. This application was submitted two weeks ago and there's no further explanation from the applicant other than dropping the plans off. I've had email communications with them for this evening. They agreed to execute Form H, giving the board review and a review extension up through December 31st. So what they're looking for tonight is an extension to our December 13th meeting. I did review this with town council and after his review of the law, he had no problem as long as the party agreed to the extension. Even though this is an A&R Plan, typically there isn't an extension involved with such a plan and we have 21 days to act upon it. But he's in agreement. I did include that in the staff report. So the motion I'm looking for is included in the staff report and that's to extend it.
To continue to December 13th?
Correct.
Do you have that Form H?
I do.
And it was signed?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to first accept the submitted Form H.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to make that motion. I'll accept the Form H.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to accept the Form H for Lots 8A, 8B, 8C, National Ave. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Need to do the same, Harry, for the application?
Sure, I'll accept the Form A as well. Motion to accept the Form A application as well.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the application for Lots 8A, 8B, and 8C, National Ave, A&R Plan. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one motion to continue.
Are we going to discuss the plan at all? Not at all?
Well, if you want to. I don't want to spend much time with it.
Okay, just, you know, when they come back. I mean, I don't know if they're going to come back and, I just, to save them some time. I mean, there's some errors on it.
Well, I would like them to.
Yeah, they're not here, so it's a moot point. It's a moot point.
We're going to have to go over it again.
Yeah, we're going to have to do it again and what a waste of time. We'll need another extension.
My question, I don't know if you want to acknowledge it, but I thought this was in court. In my room.
That's what I'm trying to find out. I did email.
There's a lot of questions.
Yeah.
There's a lot of questions. So we're waiting, we really can't. We really need to hear from John Eichman and town council on this before we can really even get into it. So I think with that, we should just continue the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue. This isn't a hearing, but to continue this review, possible endorsement to December 5th?
13th.
13th, excuse me. December 13th, 2017 at 7:15.
Second. Motion has been made and it's been seconded to continue the review of 8A, 8B, 8C, National Ave, A&R Plan to the December 13th, 2017 meeting.
Can I just ask one point on that?
Discussion, yeah.
We have in the past mentioned how helpful it is to have the applicants here for these discussions. Should we, should make it known to the applicant that their presence at the following meeting would be?
I think that's great.
Would be greatly appreciated.
Can you add that to the, many lists of things for you to do?
Yeah, in talking with them, they do plan on being here for the 13th. Yep.
Okay. No more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay, moving to the one public hearing that we have, which is Bailey Lane OSRD. What we'll do. I think what we'll do is, so we'll have a, after we open the meeting, we'll go with John to give us an overview of where we are and then we'll go to the applicant and public board. I'm going to want to comment before we get the applicant going, but with that said, looking for a motion to open.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to open the continuation of the Bailey Lane OSRD.
Wait a second.
Okay.
Your motion, yeah, has been made and seconded to reopen the public hearing for the OSRD Definitive Subdivision Plan Application for Bailey Lane. With that said, John, you want to give us an update?
Yes, the update is that this was continued from the Planning Board's first meeting in October. And the applicant has been working to address all of the outstanding items resulting from that meeting. And Larry Graham was also at that meeting, if you board members recall, and he has concerns basically still outstanding having to do with the drain system. So.
That camera deal?
Yeah, yeah. So, leading up to this meeting, as reported in the staff report, when I sent out these packets, these packets for this particular meeting, all of the outstanding issues had not been addressed in time for the packets to be mailed out along with the revised plans. On Monday, I did receive the response letter addressing all of the outstanding issues and the plans, the revised plans were submitted also.
On this week?
Yeah, yeah. I explained to the applicant that, you know, the packets go out on Thursday and, you know, there's really nothing we can do about it leading up to the meeting. So here we are this evening. I have the packets that were submitted by the applicant with me here.
I don't want to hand those out to them.
No, and I said that, you know, the typical order of business is that if the revised plans or any other documentation is not included in the packets, that the board typically does not review those items because the board members do want to have time to review. So that's where we're at. And knowing that the board likes to accommodate applicants to the extent possible, I did advise them to be here this evening and see, you know, what order of business we're going to be able to conduct tonight.
So I guess if you wanted to make a presentation of the documents that have been submitted, you know, and wanted to take five minutes, not any more than that, that's fine. But we're not going to get into reviewing it. And I guess the question that comes up for me is, why was it not submitted on time when we, you even wanted it to be October 13th if I recall for a meeting and we said, no, and this will give you even more time? So why submit it Monday and expect to have a meeting on it? I just don't understand.
I'll let Rich address that. Well, because there were, you know, a bunch of items there that the whole team needed to get involved in and by the time we got it together, it was Friday. So I'm not sure when, we had to meet with the neighbors about the landscaping and develop a plan based on that and.
Yeah, I met with the neighbors two weeks ago.
Okay. I mean, so I don't want to, I don't want to beat that voice, but I think you understand our position.
I do.
So I think, I think what I would like to recommend to the board is that we, as long as we have the extension of time involved, that we don't get into a meeting tonight about this project and we continue this hearing to the next available date when we will have time to review this in our next packets. And hopefully, my understanding is the outstanding item that's still there is the Larry Graham camera and the pipe deal.
We covered that in our letter, I believe.
Is that covered in the letter?
Isn't it? Yes, it is.
Okay.
We sent the letter by email, which could have been just forwarded along. And I can go through the letter.
It's not, nope.
Be quick, but that intersection, we agreed at the last hearing that we would camera it.
Yeah.
And work with the town. And we expected that to be a condition. I agreed to that, too.
Yeah.
We agreed, so, you know, to the extent that Larry is still upset about it, I'm not sure why. We agreed to do what we all said seemed to make sense, which was to.
Well, you know, if I could speak, you know, Larry's not upset with it. He just, you know, he's not going to be comfortable advising the Planning Board unless the work is done. And, you know, what he wants to do is complete his review of the subdivision, you know, as the board expects him to. So that's where we're at. He's not done, we haven't received his final review report. And he. And he actually have an email from, he respectfully requests that the board not take final action until this particular issue is satisfactorily resolved. That's all he's asking.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask when the, what the date on the latest Form H is?
Well, that's...
That's another issue. The applicant at the last meeting agreed to, and it's in the minutes, agreed to the extension request that the board requested. And that's December 31st. I do have a Form H here that I don't have executed at this point in time. Would you guys be, you're not gonna be willing to extend it?
You won't extend it?
I'm not signing that tonight, no.
I, you know, it just...
Deny the lack of information?
Just for the...
I don't, I don't, I don't wanna go there that quick, Harry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, just, just say the piece. We were all at the table at the last meeting and you agreed.
I sent a extension through to December 8th, thinking that you'd have another meeting in November, that we were going to vote tonight, and then get the final decision in November, and I sent it.
Well, we won't meet, we won't meet again until December 13th, that's the... I mean, we're working, I think, as diligently as we can as a board and as a community with you. We, you know, we're, you know, it isn't our problem that the plans aren't coming in on time so that the board can get... We could've finished this tonight, in all likelihood, if the due diligence was done and completed on your part in a timely manner. We're not being hostile. I don't think anybody here is hostile. We wanna work this project through to fruition as quickly as we can.
This has been three years. So, you don't have a signed extension, so you have a, this is a definitive approval process, isn't it?
Regardless of, you know, you were emailed that request, the form.
On November 17th.
Typically, every applicant will work cooperatively. If you're here tonight to create a hostile environment, after something you agreed to at the last meeting.
I'm asking a couple of questions, John.
You agreed, but didn't execute.
John, I'm asking a question.
What do they call that? What do they call that? They call that reneging on a promise?
John, I have the, I have the document I sent you.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
Let me jump in, let me jump in.
I have the document I sent you, what are you talking about?
Okay, let me, let me just jump in. So, why, why can't we, why can't we get past, you know, yesterday?
It's the document I sent you, what the hell are you talking about? Accusing me of reneging. How dare you?
Is it for December 31st?
It's for December 8th. How dare you?
We only go to the end of the quarter. We go to the end of the quarter.
It's original document.
I emailed it. There's the second email you haven't gotten. The last meeting you didn't have an email and you sent me an apology the next day.
And I did, I apologized, and I said I'd owed you a public apology, which I am offering right now.
Well, this is not...
For not receiving an email the afternoon of the meeting, so.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Why is it set to an odd date? We do it in quarters.
Well, what you do in quarters, because at that time, we was, we thought we were getting approved tonight. I looked at the calendar and I said, okay, the next meeting is on the 22nd. So I gave it two weeks to write a decision and we called.
So here, well, here's what I'd like to, here's what I'd like to propose, here's what I'd like to propose. I think this is, I think this is, Karen, okay, I think everybody thought tonight was gonna be the approval night.
Yeah.
These drawings and materials were not submitted on time. We haven't even looked at this.
Agreed.
So the fact that we can't approve it tonight, which we all thought we were gonna do tonight, it's gotta go to another meeting. So based on that, can't you agree to that?
Yeah, I can, but I wanted to clear the air that, you know, I should've kept it, known for constructive approval.
You know what, I've been working cooperatively, everybody is trying to, you're trying to create a hostile environment.
John, it's okay, if we just get, if we just get the end, if we just get the end result, that's all that I care about right now. And I, you know, if we get the extension, then let's just go with that.
So, we're coming back on the 13th?
Would that be correct, John?
Yes, it is correct, yeah.
Okay, and is that what, is that what we need for the continuation and extension?
That's correct, and that's in the draft motions. So this is through December 31st.
Correct, and you're acknowledging this is, you just received that.
Yes.
God is my witness and 20 people in this audience.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, can we?
I will make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if you'll hear it and if it's appropriate at this time.
Please, Eric.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for the OSRD definitive subdivision plan application, Bailey Village, Bailey Lane, Bartlett Court, MAPD parcel 6A-1, to the December 13th, 2017 planning board meeting at 7:20.
Second. Okay, motion has been made and it's been seconded to continue the public hearing for the OSRD definitive subdivision plan for Bailey Lane and Bartlett Court, MAPD parcel 6A-1, to the December 13th, 2017 planning board meeting. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, John.
Can I do it?
Nope. Let's see here, so we are... All right, so we're gonna move up to... I got a headache. So we have next on the agenda, the Affordable Housing Trust, and they...
Mr. Chairman?
I don't know where they are, so I was gonna wait.
Did we maybe wait on that and just go to the...
Well, that's what I was gonna do, Harry.
I got a headache.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna...
It should get better.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we'll wait till they show up here and what we can do is we have the, those items that we were continuing from the correspondence. And, let's see, there are three, there's Copeland Pages, Changes to the Open Meeting Law. There's Georgetown Plaza, 6474 East Main Street, and 198 East Main Street. Both of those are decisions of approval endorsing those. So, before we go to those three, there are two items, because I'm looking at the member of public concern part of the agenda. And this is kind of falling into that camp now, we're taking those three and moving it down there. My understanding is the East Main Street Skate Park, that that, remember the skate park? That that permit expired July 23rd, 2016. That was a long time ago. That's how long that project's been hanging out there. I would like to suggest that the board authorizes, John, to send them a memo letting them know that their permit has expired and to please not do any more work until they bring the project back up to speed and everybody gets on board with whatever the heck is going on.
They don't have any money, anyway. They're not gonna do anything.
So I just wanna make sure that, you know, they don't have some agreement with the church who's gonna go do something and so on and so forth. So, would the board be up to having John just sending them a memo to that effect?
So moved.
Yeah, okay. Second, motion's been made and seconded to authorize John to send the East Main Street Skate Park Committee, Park and Rec Committee, notification that their permit has expired as of that date, John? And that they, you know, can't do any more work until they bring it on back. So that was one item. The other item was, I would like to share the LED memo that the planning board unanimously agreed to with the, our adjacent towns' correspondence. I think it's important information, and I'm absolutely amazed at how many towns just think that, oh, this is lighting, this is what we do, yeah, okay. So you know how we get correspondence from adjacent towns? And I would like to share ours with them. I see you questioning.
So, I like the information going to the adjoining towns.
Oh, the way that was written?
Yeah, the inter, off the interdepartmental communication, it's kind of airing in a dirty laundry room.
I totally agree, I totally agree. So, what about, what about John just, it would be a memo from our towns bringing to the attention of the other towns the AMA 2016 issue, and it's just an FYI for the adjacent towns. Would the board be okay having John do that? I just wanna share this information with the public because I, it's amazing how many people you talk to and they just assume that what is up there is. And yet, probably 75, 80% of the people I talk to, and I don't care what town I'm in, they all go, I hate those lights.
Oh, my.
They all say they're too bright.
I think it's great information to share, absolutely, I just, the inter, inter board thing.
Everybody on board with that?
Sure.
We don't need a vote, I just, I don't think we need a vote.
But unanimously consent?
Hey, John?
Yeah.
So can, can you, the board is just kind of unanimously nodded to just issue a planning board memo, bringing that document to their attention, and I think you have a PDF of that AMA?
I do, yeah. And not send out.
Not the...
You're gonna send the whole thing?
I thought the OSRD...
It was good reading.
Because, I mean, you might not wanna send the whole thing.
I was thinking of subscribing to.
You have the abbreviated version. You have the short, just that sentence.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, thank you, Board, for those, and now let's, number seven is Copeland Page, important changes to open meeting laws. And, let's see.
Larry Argon's here.
Should we do the certificates of vote, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, yeah, let's do seven last. So let's go to 198 East Main Street, OSRD endorsement of the decision. And we have that decision, that's the original for signatures. So, did we close the hearing?
Yeah, I believe we did.
You did, so this is simply, this is not for discussion?
Just sign it.
Just sign it.
It's the motion to sign the certificate of vote.
And everybody received a copy of the final decision.
So looking for...
Motion to sign the certificate of vote for the OSRD special permit site plan definitive subdivision application for 198 East Main Street, MAP 10, Lot 11.
Second, okay, motion has been made and it's been seconded to sign the OSRD special permit site plan definitive subdivision application for 198 East Main Street, MAP 10, Lot 11, dated October 25th, 2017. Any discussion?
I do have one, I had one question mark when I read that, and that was on page four, D, 1D. And my question was regarding, how does, how do we accomplish this emergency access easement? How do we get that on a, on a plan and register it?
That would be done after. Do you wanna address that?
I haven't seen your final decision, but what John and I talked about is that we will, once the period's over and you sign the plans, we will provide you a deed to the conservation land and an easement for the right of way, which is, will be executed by us and then recordable by the town or us, once the town accepts it. Because I believe the easement has to go to town meeting.
That's what, yeah, this is called as emergency access easement.
Yeah, that process was advised by Attorney Eichman to do it that way.
Do it this way? Okay, so, okay, so it'll be on the town meeting?
Yeah.
Right, but you will have executed deeds that you hold, and so you can record them anytime you want. But I think the town has a process they have to go through.
Right.
Concom can accept the Concom deed, I believe.
Yep.
But I think the access has to go to town meeting. I put that in an email with John, but he probably didn't.
No idea.
He has trouble with emails, I guess.
I advanced everything to Attorney Eichman for his advice on that.
So I think we're, I think we're...
All right, that's all I have, man.
Larry, can you, I don't recall, when we get into this with the Conservation Commission, I don't recall on the plans, was there any marking of the conservation land that was agreed to?
Yes, it's a separate plaza.
And did we agree to mark it somehow with monumentation? I don't recall.
Not that I know of, but I am having those plans for you.
So this is, this is a suggestion at this point because the decision's done.
Right.
There may be a few key points where granite monuments in the ground will help Conservation Commission 10, 15 years from now know where a few key points are.
Okay.
Not one every place where you, every corner that ang, but, so, a suggestion would be if you, you know, talked with Conservation Commission in the goodness of your heart, that has been great so far, and see if there's a couple that would help them.
One of them may be in a wetland.
Well, they won't want that. Okay, well, that's great. Who are we missing? Oh, another signature? What's the second one for?
This is for your car, and the first is for your house.
Oh, they can have a car. Even more for you, Tilly, there and there, two pages.
You know, on that note of granite monumentation, and it's been brought to Bailey Lane, applicant's attention, and the revised plan, they're depicting two spots for the monuments, right at the entranceway. Did this board want monuments in other locations?
I need to look at the plan again to verify that.
Okay.
It is a wild found lot line.
Yeah, yeah.
You can use a couple in the back.
I don't know if you have an opportunity, with everything else going on, to grab Steve and ask him his opinion of what would be helpful for a couple of monuments. He might have some insight there.
Yeah, because on the revised plans, they show, in their legend, they show, you know, granite bounds at every corner of every lot, but it's...
We're not in open meet.
Oh, yeah, we're not, we're not in that one, no. So, there's the signature.
Thank you.
Good point.
And, yep, thank you, sir.
I think we just ought to be consistent, if we're, you know, I know Little Hills has the monuments that I'm familiar with, and I think we shouldn't be haphazardly saying two over here, but five over there. I mean, we've gotta have a routine of being consistent.
I look at it this way, from my perspective, when we're doing these OSRDs, we're doing it for the Concom, the Concom's getting the land, they should be the ones giving us that input.
This, this, this meeting is closed, is done, though, now, we're moving on, right?
I would just, generally speaking, generally speaking, with all OSRDs, as this...
Hi, Larry, thank you very much.
As a general perspective from OSRD, Concom should sort of be the one that makes those determinations, makes recommendations to us.
Makes recommendations, yeah, I agree.
This is the plaza.
Okay, yeah, so now we're moving on to 198 East Main Street?
There's that one. I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to sign the certificate of vote and the decision for 198, no, 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 we did that.
This is 6474.
6474.
East Main.
Second.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded to authorize signature signing of the Georgetown Plaza, 6474 East Main Street, certificate of vote and site plan approval with conditions. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote there. Okay, that's great. Just in time, man, you're right on schedule.
Hey, Paul. We were not scheduled till 8 o'clock. As a matter of fact, I was watching you on TV and I thought I'd better come in, since our name was being taken in vain. Vin's supposed to be out here at 8 o'clock.
Yeah.
Do have one more item here.
Copman Page, that one?
No, this is the Georgetown Site Plan, the Water Tower. They went to record the original one that was signed, the master sheet, and it wasn't recordable. So they amended it for recording purposes, and I do have that here.
What didn't they like?
It didn't have sufficient detail on it, so. What made those corrections?
Oh, my goodness.
Before we leave the correspondence section, what do we need to do, if anything, with the correspondence, Copman Page's correspondence? Is there anything we need to address on that?
Other than reading it, understanding it, if there are any questions that the board has, you look at the website, go through what the website has with all the changes to the law. And if the board has any questions they would like answered, I could send off a memo to John Eichmann.
Well, I have a question. Question is, do public meetings scheduled at seven o'clock in the morning meet public meeting, open, open meeting law?
I don't think it matters.
Well, I, I don't know if there's somewhere in there which talks about some sort of reasonable time when people can make public meetings. And to have a meeting scheduled at seven o'clock in the morning? And if it's fine, it's fine. I just want to make sure. And if you guys know it's fine for sure, then I'm good to go with that, not needing to ask.
As long as it's posted, I think that's the only requirement.
Yeah, I mean, we have economic develop, well, we did have Economic Development Committee meetings at seven o'clock fairly regularly, and they were just, they were posted.
Yeah, yeah. It's interesting, though. So, I mean, okay, if seven o'clock is okay, is four o'clock in the morning okay? Next time we have a contentious one, why don't we?
That would be a problem.
It has to be posted. It doesn't have to be convenient.
That's it.
But it has to be posted.
Absolutely. And, and, oh my gosh, I hope our website doesn't go down.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
So you have to do it all.
True, true.
Alright, so that, let's see, that takes care of
Hope we don't get hacked at the summit.
I did think it was interesting. We can do remote attendance.
Hmm, that's interesting, too.
I saw that. I liked, I saw that. So, why don't, why don't we take a five-minute recess and unless, unless the, unless the board had any other concerns that aren't on the list, and if not, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Not a concern, but
I don't know. If you wanted one, you go for it.
He's lucking with the lighting issue. That's coming up.
That's coming up. That meeting is, thank you for raising that. The meeting is for the selectmen this Monday. I'm on the agenda. And if there's anyone from the planning board who wants to attend with me, that would be greatly appreciated. Not necessary. Everyone's really busy, I get it. But that's just an FYI. It's gonna be very interesting to go.
Motion for a five-minute recess, Mr. Chairman?
Motion, second. Motion's made, seconded, all in favor? Aye. Five-minute recess, please. Alright. So, that, let's see, that takes care of
Hope we don't get hacked at the summit.
I did think it was interesting. We can do remote attendance.
Hmm, that's interesting, too.
I saw that. I liked, I saw that. So, why don't, why don't we take a five-minute recess and unless, unless the, unless the board had any other concerns that aren't on the list, and if not, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Not a concern, but
I don't know. If you wanted one, you go for it.
He's lucking with the lighting issue. That's coming up.
That's coming up. That meeting is, thank you for raising that. The meeting is for the selectmen this Monday. I'm on the agenda. And if there's anyone from the planning board who wants to attend with me, that would be greatly appreciated. Not necessary. Everyone's really busy, I get it. But that's just an FYI. It's gonna be very interesting to go.
Motion for a five-minute recess, Mr. Chairman?
Motion, second. Motion's made, seconded, all in favor? Aye. Five-minute recess, please.
Well, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too. Happy to be back.
Have you been in front of us before?
I don't think so, because when we did the plan five years ago, we only, I believe at that time, needed selectmen approval, and they changed the regulation recently to have both planning board and selectmen approval.
Gotcha.
So I've been in front of the selectmen a few times.
So, we are back now from our recess, and we are going to the last item on our agenda, which is a presentation of the Housing Production Plan for the Affordable Housing Trust. And I open it to you however you all want to handle it.
I think Lynn is certainly the one that's qualified to do this one. I have to do one for the selectmen, which is going to be a little bit different.
Okay.
So we'll let Lynn do this one. But on the other side of the coin, you guys have to vote on this, too.
Correct.
So if you haven't read it, you're probably in deep sneakers.
Hi, I'm Lynn Sweet with LDS Consulting Group out of Newton, Massachusetts, and it was my pleasure to update the Town of Georgetown's Affordable Housing Plan. This is actually the third time that I've done it for the Town of Georgetown. And I thought it might be helpful for me just to talk a little bit about process, point out a couple things in the study, see if you have any questions, and if not, we can take a vote. So, from a process standpoint, the Affordable Housing Production Plan had two pieces to it. First was the Housing Needs Assessment, and the second part was the Housing Action Plan. The plan needs to be voted by the Planning Board and the Selectmen, then it gets submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development, and they have about 60 days to review it. Usually, they come back and have some very minor typo kinds of things. And if they approve it, then the plan is in place for five years. The reason a lot of communities do Housing Production Plans is to provide guidance if they have something like a housing trust, which this community does, in helping them review developments, provide funding for projects, as well as to provide some protection against Chapter 40B, the 10% affordability requirement. Georgetown is very fortunate that it has been at 10% for quite some time because of the Longview Project, which I actually worked on a very long time ago. That was my first project here in Georgetown. And so, the Housing Production Goals are really just to keep you above that 10% mark, and that is the one handout that I sent to all of you, which is to show that for the near term, the production goals are fairly small, but you do want to keep in mind that you should try and keep adding affordable housing units, because you really don't want to fall below that 10% figure, because then you're going to lose the local control that you have right now. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions about that production piece. I know that you were given the plan about two months ago, so I'm sure you've all read all 70 pages and have them memorized by now. So, the second part, I'm not going to go through the whole housing presentation, but the other part I thought it would be helpful to focus on is, one of the state requirements is that you actually have to locate places that you want to encourage housing development. So I did put in, and kind of took out of the plan, the housing development sites that we talked about with the Housing Trust. The general idea is to locate sites near retail and services. People that are on affordable incomes may not have as much access to transportation, and walkability is just a wonderful thing. We also identified a number of sites that have kind of been kicking around for a while: 99 Central Street, 35 East Main, 554 North Street, 118 Jewett Street, 5 Moulton Street, 28 Parish Road, Searl Street Rear, and 47 West Street. And sometimes that becomes controversial if you name those kinds of addresses in a plan. So that was something that I really wanted to hear back from you. You know, I know that some of them have some hair on them, but there's not, you know, because of infrastructure issues within the community, not having, you know, public sewer, there's not a lot of locations that one can easily locate affordable housing. So those were the sites that we put into the plan, and I just wanted to make sure that there weren't any concerns about that.
I am in the butter of 47 West Street, and that's a long way from any community services.
I think that, I don't know, why do we put that on the list?
It's not.
Paul hates me, is what.
Probably.
It's actually, it actually, there was a development that was supposed to go in there that was supposed to be for elderly housing. It's actually gone through a plan.
Yeah.
And I think it was an approved plan by the Planning Board, too.
There's, no, it never went through.
Never. They ran out of money, I think.
It was a 40B.
Yeah.
Oh, it came in as a 40B. Yeah, I mean, part of it is, is you have to name sites.
Right.
Otherwise, you're not going to get your plan approved. So, these were ones where I guess they had heard there might be development, there's a possibility of development, there's an interest in development, and that's why we chose.
It was permitted as a 40B, so.
Oh, okay.
It didn't come to the Planning Board, went through the ZBA.
Oh, through the ZBA.
It was like 10 years ago.
Yeah, and it's just never gone anywhere. That's too bad. Yeah, and I know, I mean, 34 East Main Street, we kicked around a lot, and, you know, I know that was supposed to be a friendly 40B, and it's, the numbers really don't work for the project, so I don't really know where that's going to end up, if anything's going to happen at the end of the day, but it's a terrific location to put something, you know, something there.
That's the tavern?
Yeah, the tavern. Yeah, Mr. Olson's property.
Yeah, they just submitted an application just recently.
Did he actually submit the ZBA application?
Yeah, they're scheduled for a public hearing.
They are?
In December.
Do they, do you know, John, if they provided the memo of understanding, MOA?
The technical paperwork.
They have a site eligibility letter. It's the, you know, they basically, you know, I looked at the paperwork for them. It was very thin.
Yes, very thin.
It was very thin, and I had run some numbers for them, and so that's interesting that they actually did find.
The memo of understanding, it might, well, I don't want to get up.
Yeah, so, anyway. So that's good to hear, some, I mean, it could create some small affordable units, and it's an interesting location, and if it's all, that was going to be ownership? I think it was going to be ownership, so.
Yeah, there'd be condos.
So unfortunately, not. Only a few of them would be, you know, end up on the inventory. So.
Can we talk about the inventory?
Oh, sorry. Before we jump to that, I think I understood two different things. The sites do need to be listed, or they don't need to be listed?
You need to, you can't just, I mean, obviously, I put generally, here's where we want them, but you do need to actually call out some sites. So, and part of that is, if somebody builds a 40B somewhere that's not in your Housing Production Plan, and you're under 10%, you don't have the protection of the plan if somebody like just randomly finds a site. So that's another reason to try and include as many sites as you can, so that you can get all of the safe harbor protections that the law allows.
I guess, are those people's homes, though, that people are currently living in? Because, I mean, if I was.
I think that.
If I were one of those properties, and all of a sudden, my house gets listed on a.
Yeah, so, from my understanding, was that every single one of them is where the owner of the property has indicated that they are interested in developing.
Right.
It could have been 10 years ago, it could have been, you know, in the last six months.
Did you look at feasibility at all, though? A number of those have.
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah, they have wetlands, they have environmental, but, so, yeah.
One of these sites.
Yeah.
I think what I'm hearing is that they're fulfilling a requirement of identifying 10, and some of them may not be a perfect match, but they're.
Or a match at all, right, right.
They're checking the box.
Yeah.
Checking the box.
Checking the box. So the other thing I wanted to talk about, because it may come in front of you, or that we listed some zoning and planning strategies. And so, obviously, when you do a Housing Production Plan, you hope that something that's written in the plan will actually be implemented along the way to further the development of affordable housing. And so, again, some of this has been kicking around, because this is our third time around, but, you know, pursue 40R Smart Growth District in the downtown, investigate wastewater treatment options. Again, these are very long-term solutions for this community. Consider amending the zoning bylaw to encourage multifamily dwellings with affordable units.
I'm sorry? What did you say?
Amend the zoning bylaw to encourage multifamily dwellings with affordable units. Like, there's no zoning in town that allows multifamily, basically.
Right.
With a special permit.
It's not, there's none allowed as of right.
So, by right, multifamily.
It's a suggestion. These are suggestions.
Somerville.
You know, amend the Inclusionary's Housing Balance Bylaw. It really hasn't encouraged, it hasn't created a lot of units. Create an accessory unit program. A lot of towns try and do that, and there's so many different flavors of doing it. Consider a fee waiver or reduction if somebody comes in looking for affordable units. So those were just, you know, again, they're kind of broad, practical kinds of things to be proactive in planning for affordable housing, rather than being, you know, kind of being reactive.
So how would you list it if we prohibited multifamily houses in Georgetown?
If you prohibited it?
Yeah. What kind of a constraint would that be compared? I think that by having a special permit requirement, it's not really constrained.
Oh, I'm not saying prohibiting it. And there is, have you guys heard of the, I mean, they're basically been trying to amend 40A, you know, the whole zoning for the entire state, and one of the provisions in there is to ask towns to have some by right multifamily zoning, small, small.
But in this report, I wouldn't put a constraint on requiring a special permit.
I think I'm not understanding what you're saying.
I think all the, I think all of this is, is a suggestion to the town. It's not.
I understand that, but I would not label it as a constraint. That's not.
Label it as a.
I didn't label it as a constraint.
You just, you just said, you constrained it.
No, I.
Zoning constraints, multifamily housing constraint.
No, under my zoning planning strategies, it said amend the zoning bylaw to encourage multifamily dwellings with affordable units. That's.
I didn't get that. I'm reading, I'm reading the plan.
It's on page 14.
Oh, you're saying that there's, right, again, so, the constraints, there are like four things that you have to do to satisfy the state's requirement for Housing Production Plan, and one of them is to list constraints. We obviously know infrastructure is one of the biggest constraints in the community. Not having by right multifamily zoning is a constraint to developing affordable housing. It's not a bad thing. There's not a town in the Commonwealth that allows it by right, so you're not, we're not singling out Georgetown or anything like that.
Well, I think it's.
But from a solutions perspective, if I see a constraint, I need to make a suggestion to overcome that constraint. And obviously, that is why we say, you know, look at wastewater treatment options, look at amending your bylaw. So it's just part of our analysis.
I definitely would not. I would keep that. I think it's there for a good reason. It's to protect the residents, the single-family homes. That's what it's there for.
Sure.
That's been on the books since 1973.
Okay. Again, these are, I appreciate, I appreciate your concerns. My job is to do a needs assessment, say kind of what I saw, and then make some suggestions. And our categories aren't just zoning and planning. There's preservation, there's housing production, which is why we looked at the land. There's, a large part of it is kind of, is an educational piece, so it's kind of a four-pronged strategy. And, again, at the moment, the town has, you know, a protection from adverse projects, you know, coming in to take away local control under 40B.
And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but, again, these are on paper suggestions.
Absolutely.
And nothing more?
Nothing more, and it's really up to the Housing Trust to take charge of the implementation, and I just wanted you to be aware of the ones that, if they choose to pursue anything, might come in front of you.
Well, and then to that, so, I just want to say, I have no problem with that being listed the way you did. I, you know, whether or not I agree with multifamily going downtown, that's one issue. That goes over here. That's not what this is about. It's about identifying that it is a constraint to multifamily getting downtown, and I put that over here, and that's a perfectly wonderful subject to talk about. So that's what I take that to mean, the way you've written it.
Mr. Jim?
Thank you. You are correct.
Question. Now that the regulations have changed, and it's not merely the selectmen that have to approve.
Right.
The plan, before it can go to DHCD.
Yeah.
But now, the Planning Board, for the first time, has to actually approve the plan.
Yeah.
How does, how does an individual member that sees a suggestion such as a zoning change to allow multifamily units by right, how does that Planning Board member resolve that being part of what the plan is calling for, and at the same time approve it?
I think, Matt, please.
No, no, please.
I was going to say.
I think, I think, I think you're almost taking it to a step that this is not what the intent of the report is about. The report on this, using this as an example, this multifamily as-of-right observation, that's all it is. It's just an observation, Harry. It's up to the town to whether or not they want to then go ahead and implement going after making it an as-of-right. It's just an observation.
I think he brings up a good point, though. I mean, what are we approving?
But if you take out, but if you take out every observation of issues, then we have nothing.
I understand, and I mean, that goes to the root of my question. What are we approving? Are we saying, yes, we agree with, you know, every page 72 and 60, every, not, you know, jot and tittle? I don't think so.
May I make a suggestion, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman? So, if you would like to make suggestions and changes to the plan, we can certainly have, write down what those changes are, and take a vote, subject to those changes being made, so that what goes to the selectmen will have the changes.
Excellent.
So, is that, that's what we've done in other towns, because obviously, this is your first time, this is your first time seeing it. But I will also say that the goals and strategies are simply that, they're goals and strategies, and they're suggestions, and it's going to be up to the trust to do some, none, you know.
You've only communicated with the trust, in other words. Your observation came through them, not any of us.
Well, maybe a better way to understand this, this is a study, it's an update study, okay, of the subject matter. It's full of ideas, suggestions for the town to incorporate, incorporate at some point in time. Everything that's in here that would cause zoning changes would have to be a public hearing, voted on by this board.
Yeah.
Passed along to town meeting. There's nothing in here, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's going to activate any changes in and of itself.
It's a report, it's full of suggestions, and I don't mean to be rude, but it's not worth anything unless somebody acts on it and brings it through the proper process to enforce it.
Right, and quite frankly, the provision that you're concerned about was in the last two iterations, in the 2011 and the 2002.
When I read this, I had.
The time to address, the time to address those concerns, though, is when they come forward in the proper forum, to then discuss it, vet it out, whether you agree with it or not, and want to support it or not.
Excuse me, the problem I have, though, is, again, what are we approving? We're not approving the specific recommendations, clearly.
We're approving the report, which is putting forth a series of suggestions as to this affordable housing program.
But what's the point of that?
Well, if you go back, if you read.
I don't, I'm sorry.
No, no.
One minute, please.
Sure.
If you would actually read the document, it lists what this town's needs are based on the people that are trying to get into the town. And these are strategies to try to accomplish those needs. And if you look at it, single-family dwellings are one of the, one of the most needed elements we have here. And rentals are some of the most needed elements we have, we don't have here, but are needed to be accomplished for this town to grow. I mean, if you want to go into stasis, yeah, you just don't approve anything. But if you want to actually allow younger families come in to be able to buy a house here, you have to create something they can afford.
Well, I agree, I agree. There's been never, I've never been against affordable housing. You know that. But to me, to look through this report, which is very much similar to the last report that we had.
Absolutely.
I just wondered how this was accomplished by observation. Did you talk with, you talked, obviously, with the trust.
Sure.
But you didn't really talk around, like you had.
We talked to department heads, we talked to stakeholders, we talked to suppliers.
They talked to you, John?
John was talking.
Yeah, yeah.
When was that, John?
Um, over the last, since I was hired, actually.
Yeah, we started.
So you were new on board. You was new on board.
Yeah.
Right.
When you came to him, so he was.
But we had, we had a process whereby we looked at demographics, we examined supply, we did stakeholder interviews, and all of that information was updated from the last report. You know, obviously, a big piece of it was the change in census data. Again, this is simply a report with a guide, with suggestions, and the, it's really kind of a roadmap for the Housing Trust, because you do, you have CPA.
Right.
And money comes in for affordable housing, and in order to make informed decisions as to how to spend the money, they really need to understand what the needs are. So any implementation is going to be taken up by the trust, and if they, and quite frankly, you know, the town planner, and I know there's a lot on everyone's plate, so it's really going to, if anything's going to be implemented, it's going to be through the trust or through the Planning Department, and it's going to go through whatever the proper, you know, whatever the proper channels are. But it also, if somebody comes to you with a development, you also have the guidance that's in there, and the education that's in there, and what we're hoping is that people that are on the trust or on other volunteer boards will go out and learn about, you know, and get educated, and go to some of the housing trainings that are out there, too, just so that you're prepared to make a decision or recommendations going down the road.
Paul, your group of people, who's chair with you guys? Is it Tim?
Yep, Tim Garrity, right.
Everybody's on board with this report, I assume?
Yes, we've signed off on it.
All have signed off on it?
Right. Realize, because the needs, the needs are, were defined by research. It's not something we made up and just threw against the wall. And so then you look at, if I have this need and I want to satisfy it, what's the strategy for getting there? Some of the things, like the accessory apartment, we already tried that once, and it got shot down, because there was a poison pill built into what the state put together.
And we got shot down the 40R, which was recommended to do again, and we got shot down for many things.
But some of them are worth trying to, like 40R is probably.
Let's have some new things.
I guess, I guess, I guess what I, I guess what I wanted to say, for me, I'm only speaking for myself, is that you folks spend a lot of time with this. This is sort of, you know a lot more about this, and I'm only speaking for myself, than I do. And I have, unless I'm going to start getting into every other bailiwick, you know, I have this as a suggestion roadmap that you guys are overseeing, and because it's not signing off on anything, committing to anything other than just this report, is good as a base, as a template, as a plan, as a series of suggestions to the selectmen, for them to do it, knowing that it's all going to come back if it's ever implemented, I'm good to go.
Yeah, we all have to be on the same, on the same page.
Yeah, and I, I certainly am in the same, I'm sorry.
I just look at it as though, by this board saying this plan, by approving this plan, we're giving a guidance document to the trust. And unfortunately, what I'm seeing here, in addition to a number of errors that I've wanted to point out to you, so that you can.
Sure.
In it, this would, this looks very much, like you said, like the last two. And the focus is on rental housing. That seems to be the primary focus.
No, actually, it's two. That's one of them. The other one is smaller houses that young families can go into. Those are the two elements that are probably most foreign to this town.
But my concern was that.
But the larger, the biggest need in every community right now is rental housing, and the reason for that is that you have aging baby boomers that are looking for rental housing, or they're looking to downsize, and neither of those choices is really available in this community today. So the largest growing population is the 65-plus population. So, in particular, what we saw in Georgetown is at Longview, the fact that they put in the elevator buildings, a lot of their residents are seniors, because of that elevator building and because of one-level living. So that is, not only, not only is the reality in the demographics about where the, you know, every population is going, but it's actually in action here in your community with the rental housing that you have right now. So you need, seniors really don't have any housing choice in the community right now.
That's for the seniors. My question is, is a larger one for the community itself, and vulnerability to 40Bs? How do we use this plan to keep that subsidized housing inventory percentage as high as we can, without being crazy about it, but over that 10%? With the plan working towards rental, which doesn't count at all for it. I've watched this plan.
Yeah, rental counts.
Since we had this plan.
Rental counts. A unit of rental is the same as a house, I mean, so.
But actually, all, when you do a rental project, if 25% are affordable, all of the units count towards the housing inventory, whereas when you do a homeownership project, only the homeownership units count on the inventory.
Yeah.
So let me ask you a question. When the trust purchased the unit at 32 Lisa Lane.
Right.
And they bought that unit.
Yeah.
That unit was already on the SHI. So do we get credit for the SHI because the unit was on it, and then the fact that it's a rental on top of it?
You just get one shot, but the other thing, the other need that you're satisfying is a rental need, because that'd be rented at, even as a three-bedroom unit, and the fact that it's huge is immaterial, as far as the cost is concerned.
Except for the person that's actually living there.
Yep, that's true, well.
Wouldn't that funding have been better off spent purchasing a home that did not, wasn't listed, and then putting a deed rider on that home, and then reselling?
Was it in danger of being, of coming off the inventory? I don't know any, I honestly.
It wasn't on the inventory.
Affordable housing units be built in the development.
Is it part of the Inclusionary zoning?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I honestly don't, I don't really know, I don't know the details of that.
You mentioned on.
We bought the unit, the unit was purchased for $150,000. So it was, it was a rental unit, or was an affordable unit right away.
Immediately, both of them were.
And converting it to rental was just something we were doing, because it's part of the need of the town to have rentals. So it's a two-fur. It may not be the most efficient, but it does work.
But what didn't work with that, Paul, is that I think we had this discussion, is that the requirement was for the developer to support two houses affordable, yet the town bought that house, that one house.
That's true.
And that's, that's what I find, is there was no vote of the town. You people made that decision. We didn't even know about it until, honestly, I read this. I didn't even know this is what happened.
How could you spend money without a vote?
It's a trust. It's like a bank.
Oh, the CPA money went into the trust.
What I would, just what I'd like to suggest to the board, that if there are specific items in there that people have concerns about. so let's put them on the table and vote on them. And then, um, not talking about crossing Ts and dotting Is and word smithing. And then, um, after we've covered those items that people have specific concerns about and we voted on them, then we can take a vote on the whole thing. I'd like to, how's that sound?
I have some technical corrections, um, Paige.
Okay, do you have?
Do you want to do that, or?
Do you have any, do you have any, um, when you say technical, you're talking about crossing Ts, dotting Is and, and word smithing?
Not word smithing, just accurizing addresses and things such as that.
Okay, so I, I'm, I'm looking for, I'm going to put those into, you know, um, crossing Ts and dotting Is.
Okay.
But we can do that. Do you have any, any general?
Substantive.
Subs, yeah, substantive, conceptual, you know, components that are recommended that you don't agree with, for example, that you want to change or you want to take out?
Well, I, I, I.
Or I was just, I was just going to.
I don't even, I scribbled all over mine, and most of it was I was not happy with it. Particularly the constraints, like for instance, I'll give you an example.
Okay, timeout, I was talking to Harry, and I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought you were done, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Tilly, I'm fine with that.
I didn't mean to interrupt Harry, but I thought he was sorry.
Okay, so, go ahead.
All right, I'll, I'll give you one example, uh, off of my head that, that was disturbing to me, is parking. Let's pick on parking downtown. If in fact we allow more parking off-street for multifamily housing, we are utilizing space for the businesses. And I think that was never considered.
Can I just say one thing to the?
Are you making a, a suggestion that you would like to have more parking downtown?
So, um.
I'd like another idea.
Okay, so, so what we, what we need to do, Matt, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just, just to talk about that and some of these other issues.
Sure.
This plan is, if we looked at life only through the lens of affordable housing, what could we do to make life perfect for affordable housing? That's all this plan is.
Yeah.
It's not taking into consideration business, it's not taking into consideration that what the community wants, it's not taking into consideration anything like that. This is looking at life through the lens of affordable housing. And so looking at life through the lens of affordable housing, yes, having more parking downtown would be great for affordable housing. Having a, a byright multifamilies would be great for affordable housing. Doesn't mean that that's what the town wants, it doesn't mean that.
So.
No, but I thought there should be an added explanation of why there isn't.
So this is, so this is what we.
That's what I was looking for.
So this is what I think we need to do, or else we're just going to keep going around in circles. What I need is for, if, if a member has a concern about something that's here, um, that they do not agree with, some suggestion or recommendation, let's point it out and let's talk about what it is you think should be changed with that recommendation. And then we can vote if we all agree or not agree.
Okay.
And, and pick these off one at a time, or else we're just going to keep talking and talking and not get anywhere. Um, so, do you have, Tilly?
I scribbled all over it, I didn't write out anything to per se, but I, I know quite a few right off the top of my head.
Okay, just one, just start with one.
Well, I did the parking.
Okay, well then, let's go back to the parking, I'm trying to understand where in there is the parking that you're talking about?
It's listed as a constraint for parking downtown for multifamily housing.
Okay.
Okay. And I understand that it is a problem, it's, everybody knows that, it's nothing new.
Yeah.
If we in fact, how do we evol, let's change this. How do we correct that problem without creating more problems with the businesses? If you're going to have.
Isn't, isn't that what a 40R smart growth district would do, which, it would, it would look at a balance between the businesses and the residential?
Where are they going to park though, that's the, where is the?
So, 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 so here, so, okay, so, so your concern is about the parking?
That's what.
And, and that's just, that's the first one that you're talking about?
Your concern that it's listed as a constraint?
Yeah.
And, and so, I'm, as one member, I agree with Matt on that particular issue. It's through, I think that was a great way, I think, of describing it, this is through the lens of, of affordable housing. And for, um, that parking issue is on, from their lens legitimate as a, as, as an item to.
But there was no solution, there was no recommendation to that constraint.
And that's what the trust is for, is to, is to come forward to us with.
That's what, that's what the whole process then after this.
No, she listed recommendations, didn't you, what page was that?
I, I did, and, and.
Yeah, she did. It's not there, there's nothing there to correct that problem, that's my point.
So how would you seek?
Well, I have a plan that is going to just be dust again, let's.
That's, pull up these plans.
Get a piece of it.
Sorry, but that's.
Let's move on. Do we use up our half an hour?
Please, John.
Yeah.
When I'm looking at it that way, I look at it as something that they can move forward.
It was broadly speaking.
Please.
About a minute.
What I'm, what I'm, yeah, please.
I mean, personally, I, I found it very enjoyable reading and getting a lot of facts about the housing needs in, in the segments of housing. So it is a very good update, and, and you did a, a great job of that. I understand the community housing needs a lot better by my reading of this document. You know, not everybody is going to agree with every part of this, but again, as I said earlier, this doesn't implement anything, it's, it's a huge guidance document for all of us to better understand and learn about the housing needs, the affordable housing needs of this town. The glaring thing I got out of it is that, you know, there's a huge shortfall of senior housing. And, and it's only going to get worse as the baby boomers age. And, you know, you really have to try to start addressing that. And what happens is, the development of community addresses that. A developer of senior housing would read this and say, wow.
Yeah.
I got to find some land in, in Georgetown and Starkville.
And I, I think Harbor Lights already been in here kind of sniffing around too, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so, I mean, that's.
They're already on top of all that.
It, it was a great read for that, it's a great update. I think the town is very progressive in the fact that they have affordable housing trust in place, that it's actually, that's their job. They're, they're paying attention to this major issue that confronts everybody throughout the Commonwealth, if not the United States. You know, just to have such a guidance document in place, and it's updated now from the previous one, you know, in a broad sense, it, it's a real good thing for the community to have. It doesn't, it shouldn't scare anybody as far as, oh, this is going to create so much more housing than we, we, we want as a community. It's not going to do that. It's just a guidance.
It is.
And, and one thing I want to point out, the first generation, the massive amount of housing of that first 40B generation is now coming to the end of its perpetual, perpetual low moderate income status. It's all becoming market rate now. And when it becomes market rate at the tune of two, three thousand, four thousand units in these larger communities along the 128 belt, all of a sudden, they're not anywhere near the ten percent affordable housing stock anymore. So it does compound itself, it's just like a bank account with, you know, interest bearing. You know, 40B in its present statutory language, um, keeping up with it, community's keeping up with that ten percent, it never stops. And, um, you know, I know some communities along that 128 belt now, they have five, six hundred, eight hundred units that are going to vastly become market rate over the next year or two. And then more 40B developers will be coming in, um, into place and building up, up and up and up. I mean, 40Rs are really taking off now along the 128 belt in the inner core communities.
But for any of these things to be implemented, they're going to need a champion.
The, the, the one issue.
I thought that was you. I misunderstood.
I would be happy to continue to be a consultant for the town if, if they want to, but it is hard without having a full-time, you know, a housing planner, it, it, you know, and having volunteers, it is really, it's hard on a small town.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, I thought you had, you guys had a person, you hired a person on your group.
We did, we did, but, but, well, it's not worth discussing.
But anyway, I mean, that is, that is one of, one of, that is one of our suggestions is that they really need to hire somebody.
They know that too, they've known that ever since the other one left, I would think.
Do you still, do you still have a person?
Actually, there is a person that, that came in, uh, he, he worked, uh, he's retired, and he has worked in this industry. Not exactly the kind of thing we do, but he's familiar with a lot, all the buzzwords and things like that. And there was supposed to have been an offer made to him as a consultant quite a while ago, and it's never happened as far as I know.
So right.
I don't know.
I don't, so, so Paul, so just right now, you don't have somebody?
Yeah, me, that's about it, yeah.
Yeah, and, and that makes it very hard and.
Yeah, it does.
Of course, and that's so unfair to do that, to, to somebody.
So, so, I, I, what I want to try to do though is move this forward. And I'm trying to, I'm open to suggestions, but I thought it was a good suggestion to take individual points. And if it's moving it forward.
Right, and it is, and the only point I want to make is that.
Moving it forward may be that we vote no, I'm just saying, but move it forward.
Is correcting factual errors moving forward?
Yeah, but those are, those are easy.
Those are easy, and part of it is, was this was written eight, ten months ago, so projects have, you know, part of it is, is it, it took a very long time to get done, and every time we got an iteration done, things had changed. So at some point, you've got to kind of.
This is a general statement that, that has bothered me reading this besides, uh, different issues. And it says, we've, we've, we've established the trust, our inventory number has consecutively gone down.
Yes, it has.
They started out with almost forty percent.
That, that created all kinds of, all kinds of properties on the SHI and.
Turn on track changes.
No project has happened since then because no project has to happen.
That's not true.
It was also the reason why the town meeting.
The planning board missed out on a couple of them, uh, one over off Warren Street. But the two units that, that with Attorney Lee, they all went on the SHI.
That's, that's onesie twosie.
But that's, that's all you got unless you build a large development.
I understand, but to her point about it's going down, the numbers are going down, of course the numbers are going down. There was a huge project that went on that caught us right up over, over.
The wastewater treatment was why it was going down, or was it the cost?
The next, the next one. What, what's, I'm sorry, what's, what's going on here right now? Timeout, folks.
Yeah.
Thinking about, in addition to lack of transportation.
Yeah, I'm just doing one issue that sticks out.
Okay.
That's page twelve, uh, constraints, and it's actually the third sentence, which reads, um, it was also the reason why town meeting voted down the creation of a 40R district in two thousand nine. That one sentence doesn't really read well into as, as a.
True.
Well, if, it doesn't read or blend into the previous two sentences.
All right, so why don't you want me to just delete it?
Which, which sentence?
I think, I, I think it, it's an unnecessary editorial comment that may.
It's fine, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Which, which?
We will strike that sentence.
Which, which line is that?
On page twelve, we're going to strike the sentence, it was also the reason why town meeting voted down the creation of a 40R district in two thousand nine. It's in the conclusion, so I'm happy to strike that.
Okay, so, since you started, do you have any more?
No, that's, that was just one thing that's really stuck out.
Matt, do you have it?
That's in the body of it.
That's the body.
I have none. Harry, what do you got?
I've got a couple.
And when you say a couple, how many do you got?
Seven.
Okay. What page, Harry, what page are we going to?
Let me ask you this, are they, is it something that can be communicated easily?
All right, let's, let's, let's do it.
Big quickies, you, you're live there, right?
What page, I'm live.
Then let's do it.
Page what?
Page fifty-five.
Oh geez, we're way down, okay, hang on.
Yep.
Harry's great with this stuff.
Yeah, just, just.
I have a new computer, so I'm way, much speeder than I used to be.
You're probably there faster than I can flip the pages.
Uh, independent senior housing bylaw?
Um, actually, inclusionary housing balance bylaw.
What page is that?
Page fifty-five.
Really?
Under section seven zoning review, and then next.
Oh, okay, I have it on fifty-four, but that's okay.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's the key.
Okay, already moved up. Inclusionary housing balance bylaw.
Yeah.
Just a quickie, uh, the last sentence says, this includes homeownership at thirty Lisa Lane.
Yeah.
That should be thirty-two.
Wow, in two places, right?
Actually, thirty Lisa Lane is, is an affordable unit too.
Right, but it's talking about the two units.
It repeats it, that's all, it's a key error, hasn't it?
Yeah, and they're both being called thirty-two.
Okay, so, one, one is thirty and the other's thirty-two.
I didn't pick up on that.
Okay, so the second one has been corrected to thirty-two, okay?
Great, open space residential bylaw on the next page.
Okay.
It says there are three OSRD projects in Georgetown. You're calling out Little Hill, forty-five lot Little Hill.
Yeah.
You need to delete that, that was a PUD. That was not OSRD.
Right.
Predated OSRD.
Oh, way, way before, yeah. Page six.
So should I say there are two, and at least three?
No, we have a few, and only, uh, they're low.
Maybe I should say there are several.
Several, yeah.
There are several.
Stay with that.
It's a good round number.
Okay, now this is terrific, okay? Where are we going next?
Sixty-four.
The sixty-four, only question.
Sixty-four, couple, oh, okay. Where it says, the Affordable Housing Trust's accomplishments under zoning and planning where you instituted the six-month demolition delay according to your two thousand eleven housing production plan. That was done in two thousand six, long before there was ever a housing production plan, or a trust. It was done by the historical commission, not by, uh.
Which, which section is it?
Uh, under zoning and planning, there's a heading zoning and planning.
Institute six-month demolition delay of historic structures?
Yeah, you should just pull that.
That's not one of our accomplishments.
That's not something you guys did.
That's not the trust's.
Oh, you guys are taking credit, okay, that's struck.
No, it's the historical commission.
Right, right, that's, I'm agreed.
Okay, got it, gone.
And, under the, a couple of things down, housing production spent two hundred thousand and sixteen to purchase a bedroom home at thirty-two Lisa Lane from the developer, that didn't produce the housing, the planning board produced the housing. We ordered it. You just paid for it again, that's all.
Is that technically the fact that they contributed the money?
Uh, well, it sounds like it's production, and it was not produced by the trust.
Um, so they contributed to the production?
No, actually, they replicated it silly, in a silly fashion, in my opinion, but.
Does it really?
How would you, how would you, well.
I don't think that should be an accomplishment at all.
That they, that they contributed money towards creating housing?
They contributed.
They didn't create it.
No, contributing money to the housing.
Okay, maybe contributed.
I'm going to say contributed.
Contributed.
To the trust.
Two hundred thousand dollars in order to purchase the room from the developer.
Yeah, you put the rental and then we did create that, but we didn't create the house per se.
Does it even really matter?
It's semantics.
It does if you took the two hundred thousand and you actually went to a unit that was not on the SHI.
No, 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 no.
And you changed that to SHI.
Not if that matters, no, who gets credit for it?
Yeah, okay.
Does that matter?
I think we're good, we're just going to change spent to contributed.
That's my question.
It's just to be accurate, that's the whole.
But housing was produced at the end, affordable housing was produced, and part of what they did was contributing money. It sounds like there were many hands in getting this accomplished.
Definitely.
Okay, what, where are we going next?
Page sixty-five.
Okay.
It talks about housing production program, and it says, the town of Georgetown has expressed a desire to create or maintain affordable housing regardless of whether the units can be counted on the SHI.
Correct, I heard that from my committee.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of places.
I, I, I think a lot of places, I, I think a lot of the people in Georgetown are very, very concerned about the SHI staying well above the ten percent.
And, and I'm going to tell you that even if you don't produce the units that I stuck in there, you're still going to be above ten percent.
I would certainly hope so. Matt, perhaps you could say the town of Georgetown Affordable Housing Trust has expressed a desire?
Uh, let me just see.
To say that the George, the town of Georgetown has that as a, a little.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, um.
It's true, the town of Georgetown sometimes doesn't care, so.
Let me just take a look.
Yeah, I think they would want to see housing that's produced go on the SHI. If people, if, if someone actually knew what the SHI was, then I think they would want it.
Yeah.
And.
I'm, I'm having trouble finding that, I wonder if it's on sixty-four on my copy. Is it before or after the table?
Oh, you're, you're before the table. Georgetown Housing Production Program is the header.
Yeah, and so what paragraph is it?
And it's the next, it's the second paragraph.
Communities of not many.
Last, last of the, oh, well, okay.
Okay, the Town of Georgetown Affordable Housing Trust?
Has expressed a desire?
Okay.
That works.
Okay.
I don't like that.
Yeah.
Seventy-two. Seventy-two.
Glad you have your computer here.
Really? That's the way to do it. That's the way to do it.
Well, I, I was told it was gonna be half an hour, so I didn't.
How long a drive do you have?
I gotta go back to Newton.
You can't get that from here.
I could when I left the house at seven versus five. All right, Harry, what's next?
Newton's S H I look like, but you don't have to go there, trust me, I know.
Trust me. Actually, Newton got rid of its Affordable Housing Trust. One less meeting I have to go to.
Let's, let's get you out of here as soon as possible.
What number are we on?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was on page seventy-two.
Seventy-two?
Yeah, it was just a comment that the, the town may want to consider amending its bylaws to allow conversions by right. And, and again, that falls into that category of things that are being suggested.
Maybe someday, if somebody wants to. Okay.
And which we may or may not agree with.
Yep.
And seventy-four, I have an asterisk. Buy down existing affordable units with deed riders and record confirmatory deeds.
And they're doing that to some degree. I mean, that, that is an issue. Basically, a lot of the original deed riders were faulty.
Before they, before.
Now they have a universal deed rider. So again, a lot of this stuff is, you guys are not like alone with that, but it's a way of, of not losing the unit. You've already gone to the, the trouble. Oh, we got a thumbs up for that one?
Oh, yeah, you get a double thumbs up for that. Not losing the ones that we're losing.
Yeah, and that's, that's part of what, if the trust does nothing else, making sure you don't lose.
Yeah.
Which is really where John was going to. There's a lot of expiring use projects out there right now.
And I think the only, the final part is your actual strategies and what I'd call your, uh, I don't know, your, what would it be?
What page are we on?
Oh, I'm sorry, seventy-nine, the chart. You seem to have the planner and the planning board doing a, a number of things there.
Right, would you like to, would you, John, are you okay with that? You want to change any of that?
I'm fine with it, whatever I can do to help.
I mean, at the end of the day, I could put the trust next, you know, everything's gonna originate in the trust, but at the end of the day, I think it basically says who the decision makers are. That's really, the trust can make recommendations, but they can't change it.
Well, it says responsible party, and it sounds as though, uh, this is like a, this is an action plan, basically, if this was an open space.
Would you like me to take planning board out of, out of P B off of everything?
I, I, I don't know if the planning board and the planner want to amend the zoning bylaw to encourage multiple family dwellings with affordable units.
But they would be, but they would be the ones that would do it if it did.
But they are the responsible party.
If they wanted to, right.
So they're the responsible party to do it if they do want to do it. That's not saying they, they have to do it or they will do it. It's just saying they're the responsible party, which is correct.
Well, John, do you, is new what page we're on? We're on the chart at the very end, yeah. Do you have thoughts on that?
Um, a, a, as you just pointed out, it's part of our job, you know, part of the planning board's job. You know, if, if someone's gonna put forward a zoning amendment that's going to provide for the ingredients of affordable housing, we're gonna have the public hearing on it.
Correct.
And it's gonna be forwarded to town meeting.
It's getting it forward is the problem.
Right.
So is, are we gonna repeat what we've already done and send it around the, the circle again? Or are we gonna get someone to improve on it or try to make it palatable for town meeting? I mean, that's what we need, and I don't see any of that recommendation in here, that we really need that kind of input.
I think there is, they do talk about the fact, this process has to be sold. Forty Rs for sure. You have to sell it. The, the populist has to say, "This is a good idea," and then they'll vote for it. If they don't understand it, they'll vote against it automatically.
No, I think.
Let me just ask this, I'm sorry. Har- Harry, did you have any more?
Uh, there, there are a number of other things, and I, I just look at it as a, yeah, that's, this is the seventh.
Okay.
There was seven, A, B, C.
Okay.
Good line.
It started out with a couple.
Yeah, it's sort of like discovery, you know, we get like twenty questions.
So how many more?
No, this is, this is it. This is it.
Well, what is this?
This chart?
What, how many are there?
It's the action plan, and all of the things that the planner is working in conjunction with the trust on.
If they want him to.
Right.
So would you be comfortable if everywhere that says planning board, she writes planning board slash trust?
It does say trust planner, planning board, consultant, trust, planner, trust.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that the planning, the planner is gonna work for the trust again.
I spread it all around.
And using his time for that.
Yeah, that's.
You guys are gonna have to authorize him to use that time.
Is it, I'm assuming that the interpretation, the way I interpreted that was that it's just saying that if, 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 again, it's an action item, that if, if he's gonna work for the trust, he's got to be authorized by the board to be working with the trust.
Whoever, whoever sets John's schedule and agenda and his work plan is gonna be the one who's telling him what he's doing.
And I thought we'd settled that when we hired John. It wasn't gonna happen.
Right, but if you're doing zoning, zoning is your job.
Everybody voted for that.
Well, some, no, the zoning parts, the zoning parts that doves tails.
Yeah, all this, all this, all this chart does is take everything that's written and put it into one table. And, and, and the, the housing strategies, the implementation plan is a set of suggestions. And if you choose to move forward on any of those suggestions, this table is just saying who the party would be that would be doing that work. But somebody needs to decide that they want to do it. If they want to do it and they want to put it on someone's plate, they need to see if there's a budget to do that, and so on and so forth.
Would it, would it work for you, Harry, if you did something like where all of those are mentioned to put a star or an asterisk, whatever you want to call it, and then put a footnote with a star and an asterisk, and just says that, you know, uh, any planning board involvement, any town planner involvement is, is, needs to be approved by the, by the planning board? Would, would that help with that? Is that your concern?
I, I.
I mean, I can put comma, where it says planner, town planner, comma, I can put, I can put a comma saying needs to be, you know, authorized.
When authorized.
When authorized.
When authorized by the board.
By the.
I mean, the, the reality is, right, and, and I look back at the predecessors of this position, there truly is not enough time in the day just to deal with planning board stuff, and, and then just doing everything else. And you really.
Planner, town planner, when authorized.
Stretch, stretch, stretch.
Can't do it.
I mean, and, and I looked at my predecessor.
When we were dealing with my forty R, which is a zoning issue.
Planning, and then do affordable housing. When I, I don't have time in four days to do planning.
No, no.
And it's like.
The thing is that they need a staff person. That's, that's number one.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm gonna put comma, when, if necessary, authorized by the planning board, because there may be things that come in like a forty R that you're supposed to do. Is that okay? Does that qualify enough?
I, I, I'm not too keen on that at all. I would rather prefer.
I would prefer their staff person, not the planner. Their staff person.
You don't want us doing zoning?
I want you, you, you should have a staff person to, you would advise him through your home consortium or whatever groups that you work with, "How can we create affordable housing through zoning?" And they will come up with copies and works, and they should. That's their job.
Well, some of these things have already been created. The forty R is, is in existence, but it has to be approved by the town, and then it has to be implemented.
Yeah. I mean, like you, like you did this update, this probably would never have been achieved by the board itself. You had to hire a consultant to do it.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
And I think what you're really tackling is whether you hire a consultant to progress the ideas of this. And that's how, that's how you progress the ideas.
We'd be very happy to.
I don't know if you need a staff member, but as long as you have an active progressive consultant that's doing it, implementing what needs to be implemented to progress the ideas here, so that the town has a chance of voting on this stuff. Not that it's gonna pass, but if.
And, and, and I think what's important about what John's saying and what Tilly is, is getting at, and I think what Harry's getting at too, is that the, the town planner, you know, is already overworked, over, he's just, so when, when he's needed, at, at, I think the way you wrote that works. I mean, but the goal is that when John's needed for zoning questions and that sort of issue, but, um, you know, the primary responsibility, and I think that's a key word, the primary responsibility resides with the housing.
And the trust, and that's why their, their name is all over it, okay, so.
In fact, in the budget that I'm submitting to the C B C for monies, one of the projects in there is to, to get a consultant to do the forty R work.
Right.
To put the, the, the package together and to do the, uh, the people, the people thing with the town, so they, they understand what they're looking at. Uh, 'cause they'll always vote against something they don't understand.
Yeah.
Uh, and so that would be something, I wouldn't do it. I'm not capable of doing that. So we get someone that knows the forty R down pat and how to sell it.
Yeah.
And go with it.
Yep, nope, on board. So you've got that correct.
I've got all the changes I got from Harry. I repeated everything back. I'm saving it as a markup dated today.
Harry, did you have any other?
I will write out some, but there's another one that, that on top of my head on, on the other constraints. That whole paragraph, I think, is ridiculous. You wrote difficult permitting system? Who advised you that it was a difficult permitting system, and where did you get that from?
Tell me what page you're on.
I'm on page, uh, forty-three. No, excuse me, my glasses, sixty-three, I'm sorry. We, you know, who made that determination? Is, that's why I'm thinking somebody's feeding you this? I think that was terribly, uh, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, my apologies.
Sixty-three.
Yep.
Other constraints right in the middle?
Yes, so for some reason, I'm off a page, and I'm wondering if you guys don't have an older version that's so interesting. Two thousand fourteen community development plan listed several liabilities for housing and residential development. Another constraint, parking requirement which mandates to Austrie. So where are you?
Can you find?
Other constraints, right in the center of that page, sixty-three. Right here. The two thousand and four community development.
It's the first par, it's the first paragraph under other constraints.
We got that right out of your community development plan.
That's what I'm saying.
That's in your community development plan.
Well, from two thousand and four?
Right.
You don't think we did any better since then?
Well, you don't have any other plans for me to look at.
Well, so, so just, so just to nip that one then in the bud, can you just say, get rid of the word difficult? Or get rid of that idea that it's a difficult process?
Oh, okay. So you want me to get rid of the parentheses, difficult permitting system that qualifies it?
Right. I mean, I mean, it's, it seems to be construed.
The difficult permitting system means, again, it, I'm, I'm getting rid of it. I'm taking out a difficult permitting system, but I think it probably harks back to the next line where it says no multi-family zoning, no apartments.
And did you, did you give it to the conservation committee to look at their, the paragraph above it?
We actually spoke at length with, um.
Steve Produski.
Yeah.
And he, he said, "That's great."
Okay, so that's between them and them. Let's, let's, I want to stay focused.
So I got that.
Well, I think, I think that, that's, you know, overall, to paint a picture of those constraints. I don't know. I just.
All of, all of it came directly from people that we spoke to and documents that we read.
That's what I mean. Who did you speak to? And I'm trying to get back to that.
All the department heads.
I mean, who did you speak to? A developer that was unhappy that he didn't get what he wanted? Did you speak to the trust that was listening to something else? You know, I'm trying to.
She said, she said development head five times, Tilly. With all due respect, she said development head five times. She's spoken to the development heads.
Department heads.
Department heads.
Yeah, we, we interviewed all of them, and we got it directly from them. Are there other concern, are there other edits to the report that you'd like for me to make?
I, I will look it over. I just scrolled through it because I was kind of discouraged with it, to tell you the truth.
Mostly they're attributed, you know, to either myself or whoever.
Yeah, we have, we have references, and we have sort, we have references throughout the document and a few, and sources at the very end of the document.
So what I, I guess what I would like to suggest is that, seeing that there are no more specific items with the report, in order to move this along, that someone makes a motion to approve, uh, what is it that they, we need to approve this for forwarding to the selectmen? Is that what the motion is?
Yeah, there's a draft motion at the bottom of that one-page staff report.
Yeah, let me just.
And then, and then, um, we can have a discussion if you want more discussion on it.
So basically, the, um, letter that we're, we're asking for the Georgetown, um, selectmen to sign is that it was adopted by the municipal planning board and select board of the Town of Georgetown, constitutes the Community Affordable Housing Production Plan, and the Town of Georgetown respectfully requests approval from D H C D of the Affordable Housing Plan.
So.
That would go in the cover letter to the state.
Okay, so we have a, we have a draft motion here. Does somebody have that draft motion? I, I'm looking at if you all have that too? Or you can make a motion, and someone can second it, and then we can discuss it.
I moved that the planning board, uh, vote to approve the Town of Georgetown Housing Production Plan, last updated twenty-seven July twenty seventeen, and is prepared by Lynn D. Sweet, managing member, Noah Hodg, Hodgson, Market Analyst Planner, L D S Consulting Group, LLC, two, three, three, Needham Street, Newton, Mass., zero, two, four, six, four.
I think you just need to vote it with the amendments that we just made.
Uh, as amended, yes.
Second amended. Motion has been made, and it has been seconded to, uh, vote, planning board vote to approve the Town of Georgetown Housing Production Plan, updated July twenty-seventh, last updated July twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, and as amended this evening, and as prepared by Lynn D. Sweet, managing member, Noah Hodgson, Market Analysis Planners, L D S Consulting Group, LLC, two, thirty-three Needham Street, Newton, Mass. Uh, any discussion?
Yes.
Harry?
I just, I'm just envisioning a developer coming in to town meeting with an, an initiative petition for multi-family housing by right in any district, and standing up at town meeting and saying that the planning board approved this plan wherein they recommended it, this plan recommended it, and the planning board approved it. And I'm, I'm wondering.
I.
Where, I, I, I think the essence of this is that we're adopting it, and we're recommending that the selectmen adopt it and D H C approve it. And I think it's, it's, it's new to me. We never had to do this before. So it's a responsibility that I don't know how heavily I should weigh that responsibility.
And I, I would stand, I would feel very comfortable, and I'm speaking just for myself, I would stand up at public meeting, annual town hall, and I would say, as a planning board member, I voted to support this and endorse it, to pass it along to the selectmen one hundred percent. And the reason was, is that it puts on the table this issue of discussion about multi-family housing. We did not vote as a planning board to say multi-family housing should in fact happen, but in fact, what we're doing is talking about it now, which is exactly what the intent of this report was, and I supported it a hundred percent then, and I support it now because it's doing what it was supposed to do. Second.
I'm ready to vote.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Four yes, one no. All set?
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time.
And I think that takes care of our night.
It does, except for the signing of that one plan.
Signing, we so, we'll close the meetings and then we'll sign.
So I'm gonna send you.
Motion's so made.
Provide document.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Send you the.
All right, good night, everybody.
Have you got a mileage this time?
Yeah, we just have something.